Hello.
Hello.
Thank you, John.
How are you, Alderman Budmats?
Okay, how are you doing?
Doing all right. All right, I'm a little bit sore from shoveling.
Testing.
You and me both.
Hey, John, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm a little bit sore from putting together a new snow blower in my family room here.
The family room, nice.
Well, it was a little cold outside. By the way, my son will snow blow people's driveways.
Luckily, this snow wasn't too heavy, at least when I was shoveling, it wasn't too heavy.
Yeah, I told him I'd get him a new shovel, but we wound up with a snow blower.
Yeah, we just use the snow blower at the bottom where there's a lot of the heavy stuff from the plows.
Yeah. I'm happy to say they have their timing down perfect again, where driveways are fully completed and then they come flying through.
That's always good.
It's a tradition. But the streets were great this again.
We're gonna go ahead and give it, it's obviously a minute before 7:30, but I always give it about another minute or so after because it always, well, it never fails as soon as I start the meeting, have to let in a couple more folks, so I might as well just wait a minute or two. Yep. Letting in the last two folks in the waiting room and then I'll go ahead and get started. Okay, well, I have 7:31 on my clock, and so I might as well say good evening and welcome to this snowy Tuesday, January 26th meeting of the City Council. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, and in order to do that, I'd like everybody to remain muted, but still at this time, join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With the pledge completed, I'd like to have all the members of the council go ahead and unmute yourselves in preparation for the clerk to call roll. And with that, would the clerk please call roll?
Mikail, here. Budmats.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano. Is she not here? Anybody here?
I'll look in the list, I don't know that I see her. Looks like Lori Sezak is joining now. Why don't you circle back to her and see if she's just joining late?
Okay, Basassi.
Here.
Diastis.
Present.
Sanoka.
Here.
And Beniziano.
Yeah, so it looks like at this time we have six present and one absent. There's still a quorum this evening, and with that, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel, as well as other media outlets. Public comment, of course, will be afforded to the public who are joining us on this conference line as long as you've provided your contact credentials and the subject matter for which you'd like to speak about before the deadline, which is also noted on this evening's agenda packet. Members of the public who might be present at city council chambers listening to this meeting are also afforded the opportunity to provide public comment in accordance with the procedures, a public comment at an in-person meeting of the city council, which is primarily, those members of the public must have signed in on the public comment sheet before the start of the meeting, and as always, any written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will be read as well. With that, let's go ahead and jump right into the agenda, and it looks like the first order of business here is to approve minutes from a previous meeting, and that meeting is the January 12th, 2021 city council meeting. Is there a motion by show of hand to approve the minutes? Thank you, Alderman Sanoka and Alderman O'Brien for the second on that. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Alderman O'Brien, I see your hand up, just wanna see if it's for changes or legacy. Legacy. Got it, thank you. Seeing no comments, questions, corrections, additions, or deletions to this, then the question is, shall these minutes be approved? With that, will the clerk call the roll?
Sassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved. Now, let me get the monitor here on the public side to catch up with the private side. We will not be deviating at this point in tonight's meeting. For the mayor's report, just two quick items to mention, which everybody should hopefully be aware of. Toward the end of last week and the beginning of this week, we saw a couple significant updates. For one, the vaccination schedule has transitioned to 1B, which is opening up vaccine opportunities for a larger swath of the population. So that's very hopeful. We also learned through the governor's office that they've loosened restrictions on businesses to welcome patrons back in. Obviously, these are small incremental steps toward progress, and we still have quite a ways to go, but those two things help me feel hopeful, and I hope it does the same for you as well. With that, are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman Mikail.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a second to thank Mr. Cannon for his service representing Ward 1 as alderman for the past nine years. And I also wanted to thank you, Mayor Gallo, for allowing me the opportunity to serve the residents of Ward 1. I look forward to collaborating with my fellow council members and moving the city of Rolling Meadows into the future. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, Alderman Mikail. We look forward to working and collaborating with you as well. Thank you for the nice comments and notes. Any other ward reports this evening? Alderman Mikail, I'm just gonna lower you. It's done. Good. Okay, well, if there aren't any other, Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I take the liberty of texting Jennifer to find out if she was gonna make any meeting, and she tell me she's having Wi-Fi problems, so she is trying to make it in, so just letting you know.
Thanks, thank you for the update. Appreciate that. You know what I really don't like? I don't like how they changed the raise hand feature. Historically, it was blue, and now it's like an orangey or yellow color, and I cannot see it for some reason, I just can't see it. So I'm gonna have to be a little bit more vigilant with those hands coming up. But anyway, thank you for that update. Now, if there aren't any other ward reports, this will be the time that we open the floor up to the public for 20 minutes, and there is a signature on the sign-in sheet. So before I call out to that individual, I just wanna lay out a couple ground rules as we do when there are members of the public speaking with the council. The first being that per the rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council, and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with that public comment. And second, in order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established, and we hope that everybody abides by them. Any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon the recognition of the presiding officer. I think we have Alderman Beniziano entering as well. And such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record, and each person shall be granted five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the city council. And finally, profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. With that being noted, the individual who signed in is John Quandrus. John, if you're on the line, feel free to unmute now. If you called in, press star six to unmute.
Hi, yes, thank you. Yes, my name is John Quandrus, and my address is 2104 Quail Lane. I'm here regarding item D, where I'm seeking a variance for my property. I'm available if anyone has any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Quandrus. That's good to know that you are available. So council, if this does come up with questions, comments, or concerns for the resident, he's here and we can make a motion to open the floor if necessary. Thank you for that. At this time, Mr. Quandrus was the only name on the sheet, so that will bring us to items pending. The first one we have, the only one we have is line item A, ordinance number 21-02. It's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Sanoka. Is there any discussion by show of hand? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Quick question, do we have to circle back and call attendance again or not now that Alderman Beniziano is here? Is there any reason for that?
Mayor, you announced that Alderman Beniziano entered the meeting, so if the clerk could just, and the clerk recognized it, so that's completely fine.
Okay.
And if Judy noted the time, she should just appropriately note the time that Alderman Beniziano entered the meeting, which I believe was 7:38.
Yes, that's what I have.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Then we can continue on here with the next set of items, which is the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of four items, items B, Bravo through E, Echo. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Alderman O'Brien.
I'd like to remove item C as in Charlie, Mr. Mayor, for hopefully a quick discussion based on the committee, the whole meeting, please.
Alrighty, I need one moment to note it. Any other council member wish to remove an item? Okay. Well, since we're gonna be pulling item C, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the three ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Sanoka, and thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. We have item B, ordinance number 21-00. It's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have then line item D, ordinance number 21-00. At this time, to grant approval of a variation from section V-2C of the city code, chapter 122, City of Rolling Meadows zoning ordinance to reduce the east side yard setback from 10 feet to 2.6 feet to allow a second-story addition on top of an existing foundation in an R3 zoning district at 2104 Quail Lane. In line item E, ordinance number 21-00. At this time, is authorize a text amendment to update section II, I, V, C, 8, B, 7 of the city code, chapter 122, City of Rolling Meadows zoning ordinance regarding outdoor seating regulations. The question is, shall the three ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoka.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. This now brings us back to line item C, ordinance number 21-00. At this time, amend the city code regarding the organization and operation of committees and commissions of the city of Rolling Meadows. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Sanoka. Alderman O'Brien, you did have the first poll on this, so continue with your questions, comments, or concerns.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just hopefully this is real brief, based on the committee, the whole, and I had a couple other residents reach out to me since then. From a consistency perspective, there was two items I was looking to possibly add in, and to make sure this can pass at second reading, hopefully this allows ample time for any additional research that might need to be done on staff or attorney Wolf's perspective. So I'm proposing potentially just two, maybe a motion on one and then a motion on the other. We can keep them separate in case one moves forward and the other one doesn't. The first one I'd like to propose to the group is, as noted during the committee, the whole meeting, there's a couple residents that had reached out from a consistency perspective, because that's the way that I was reading these, is that we can make everything as consistent as we can since we were opening up and looking at all committees and commissions. Could we add, because it's currently noted in the Ethics Committee, as well as the Police and Fire Commission, is, I don't think we have, I'm not proposing any language change or anything like that, but there is this statement that I think it's good for us too as council members, so there's not even any potential question or concern there. Is, can we include in each of the commissions, as previously drafted for approval, is the statement where no member of a committee or council could be related to any elected official of the city by blood or marriage to the extent of first cousin, I think is the wording. Just from a consistency perspective, because it's in a couple of them, but it's not in all. I was reading it from the consistency perspective, as well as the residents reaching out. So that's one recommendation or motion I'd like to pass forward.
Okay, so we'll start with that one. Is there, first, let's stop there, and as I see Starino, Dirk, and Romello hand raised, let's hear from our attorney on this.
Thank you. And thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the proposed amendment. I just want to give the council some feedback regarding the statutory requirements with respect to those particular commissions, and the provisions with respect to those that were particularly mentioned, being the Ethics Commission and the Board of Police and Fire Commissions. Those are designated by statute. So the language that you have there is mimicking the state statute, and I would not recommend changing it just for mere consistency, because that would be going against the statutory requirement.
Right, Mr. Mayor, can I respond to that? I'm not looking to change anything, I'm looking to use that leverage just in the rest of our commissions and committees. That's all I'm looking to do for consistency. I don't wanna change the verbiage, change anything with the ethics of police and fire, is just leverage that approved verbiage from the statute to the other ones. Is that not allowed, Attorney Wolf?
That is, that is fine, then, and I will be able to evaluate in the meantime if those other commissions or commissions have any statutory restrictions on that. But as long as you're not changing the Board of Fire and Police Commissioner, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I thought we could leverage that from an ease perspective and not touch those, just use that approved verbiage, if there was consensus at the council.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So now I'm looking for a second, and I see Alderman Budmats, your hand is up. I'm assuming in second of that motion?
Actually, no, I had a question, so I'll.
Well.
Until the second.
All right, yeah, so if you give us the second here, then I can at least bring it up for discussion, so you can have the floor for discussion. Alderman Budmats?
Do you need a second first as a question?
Oh, yeah, if you're not gonna give the second, that's fine, that's fine. Then we'll look at Alderman Diastis. Are you seconding, or do you have discussion? Alderman Diastis?
I'll second the motion, so we can have discussion.
Okay, all right, thank you for the second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I guess I understand the tenor of Alderman O'Brien's comment and motion. I'm curious as to, as to the effect, are there people who presently serve on committees or commissions who are related by blood or by marriage, and are we gonna be closing them out of the process? And so I think where the state statute makes that relevant, that it should not occur, is good that we would follow the state statute, but also the thought comes to my mind that I would much rather that we disclose that openly when we're seeing that these positions are voted by the council, and the recommendations are either voted upon, yes or no. So I would more like to see that we don't discriminate against somebody being on a committee or a commission, but that we could instead of, instead of not allowing that, we would require somebody who does fit into those categories in a committee that's not required by a state statute to have that, to have them disclose that at the time that they're being appointed. And then it's up to the, it's up to the council or the body as a whole, because I think the mayors, to say yes or no, and to move past that. By yield.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. I see Attorney Wolf's hand up, and then I'm gonna ask for other comments, and if there aren't any, I have some comments I'd like to share. Attorney Wolf?
Sorry, Mayor, I forgot to lower my hand.
Oh.
From before.
No worries. Any other comments for discussion on this? Alderman Sanoka?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for Alderman O'Brien, because he stated that he wants all of the committees and commissions to be consistent. And I guess, is there any other motivation behind consistency for this proposed amendment to the ordinance at hand? Was this a problem in another municipality where, you know, I'm looking at something like the capital improvements committee, or planning and zoning perhaps, or something like that, but planning and zoning isn't on here, or I'm sorry, planning and zoning is on here. Was there some sort of conflict that arose because of this relationship?
No, there's not, Alderman Sanoka. It was just from reading through that, that's the second part I have on here, which I know will treat differently, is just residency. That's another consistency perspective. So, and also to Alderman Budmats' point, I'm not aware of anything, and I think it should be, if anything, in a passage, should be going forward, not to change the makeup of the current commissions. That's all that it was. Couple residents had reached out to me, as I know during the committee, the whole. Couple more had done it after they listened to the committee, the whole. So that's the only impetus of this, is that some had it, which we know is by state law. Some residents just said, could it carry through? So that's the only reason I'm doing it. But I think Alderman Budmats has a very fair point. If there's not agreement with council for prohibiting it, is that at least maybe we document, and that's the compromise for addressing it, and just saying that they are related. That would work as well.
Then I would state that until, I don't see any reason for us to be proactive in this stance, just because I know that based off of our committee of the whole discussion, we have vacancies to fill, and I would want our requirements to be the necessary requirements, and as long as we have disclosure and we're aware of that, and someone comes forth before the council and we make the decision at that point, I think that that might make more sense. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoka. Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for my tardiness. Wi-Fi is not cooperating today. So I'm gonna kind of reiterate what Alderman Sanoka had said, that I appreciate the idea of having consistency, but one of my reservations would be that if we do have a council member and then a family member that maybe can fill a role because they're a business owner, or maybe they can serve on, you know, maybe they're an electrical engineer that can serve our community on one of our committees, that would be a benefit. And, you know, all of the appointments have to come to council for, you know, approval, you know, and that would be disclosed. So I think to have, you know, a response to residents to state that, you know, if there is a conflict, it's going to be addressed in front of council, you know, to approve or not. So I appreciate the idea of having consistency, but I would hate to turn away volunteers in a small community like ours that could potentially fill vacancies on committees that we'd need to fulfill. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Alderman Diastis?
Thank you. I see both sides of this question, and I'd like to know, is there, I guess, address this to the attorney, is there a mechanism that can be placed into each committee or commission whereby the individual has to make that disclaimer and that has to be brought up to the council before a vote is taken?
Yes, I believe the amendment that we're talking about here would require, either, if it doesn't prohibit the relationship, it looks like the next question would be whether it would require the disclosure of the relationship, and that would be a code amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien, with all this conversation, could you restate specifically exactly what you're looking to have carried out here?
Absolutely. My initial motion is that we leverage the current verbiage for Police, Fire, Bolt Commission, and the Ethics Commission about no member of a committee or commission being related to any city official, elected official, based on blood or marriage to the extent of first cousin. I do think, I'd like to get a vote on that, but I am also available. I hadn't thought about the compromise of disclosing. I think that would be a fair opportunity too, as well.
So then we can, we'll take a vote on this, and depending on how that goes, you can raise another request of motion. For me, I just wanna say that the reason there is that statutory language for those committees and commissions is it's a way to safeguard from any nefarious behavior. Obviously, those committees and commissions that have that statutory language are responsible for ensuring that if there is an investigation of some sort, that an individual on the council couldn't leverage any sort of nepotism or family relation affiliation to sway. that an individual on the council couldn't leverage any sort of nepotism or family relation affiliation to, to sway an outcome in something. Something is, I don't want to call it trivial, because it's not trivial, it's an important committee, but the Economic Development Committee or the Environmental Committee. I really don't know how the gravity of that language would, would either help or hinder by not allowing somebody of kin to participate in those bodies based on their chartered purpose. So for me, I, I don't see the relevance in doing that, other than for those committees and commissions that safeguard against potential nefarious behavior or bad actors. So I, I wouldn't agree with that. But I see Alderman Vinesiano, I see your hand is up. I'm not sure if it's up from legacy, or, thank you, it's gone now. Is there any other discussion? Alderman Sanica?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just also wanted to close out by saying that the, this is a relatively small town where a lot of people know each other and have grown up together. And if we were to pursue a disclosure amendment, then I don't know if that would really achieve necessarily the purpose that, that, that the, that the purpose of the amendment is, is there to, or for why it exists, which is what you had just explained, Mr. Mayor. So like, I could have a friend that's not related to me by blood, but if I grew up with them here in Rolling Meadows and had that kind of loyalty or influence or connection, and use it for nefarious purposes, that kind of amendment would not, would not prevent this from happening. And so I don't know necessarily how effective it would be. That's all.
Thank you, valid point. Any other comments or discussion on this? And if not, then we will have the clerk call the roll on Alderman O'Brien's motion.
Mikail. No. Budmats? What was that?
It was a no, I think.
Oh, okay. O'Brien?
Yes.
Vinesiano?
No.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diasis?
Yes.
Sanica?
No.
With three in favor and four opposed, that motion does not pass. Alderman O'Brien, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, to do another thing then, with the, I think it was a fair idea for a potential compromise, is bringing up that at least it's disclosed, that some of the other Alder men brought up this evening. So if we could do just a disclosure vote.
Is there a second to Alderman O'Brien's motion to have disclosure? Alderman Diasis, I see the second there, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none. Then the question is to add disclosure of a blood relative, including the language just stated by the statutory language for the other committees. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Vinesiano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diasis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that motion carries. Alderman O'Brien, you have any more for us?
I've got one more, but hopefully, I thought that was good, that was gonna be a quick one. This one is, just hoping again for clarification or consistency, is several of the committees do note a residence requirement, and I'm moot either way. Like Economic Development Committee, I agree outside people that are business owners here that don't necessarily live here perfectly to be on the committee. But then you look at environmental, and it says residence, or you look at, I think it's the, the capital improvement, it says three residents. So there's just a difference there. My question was, and this was, no residents reached out to me on this, this was just my reading them, is we have some that say it's required, others that don't. So if the committees that are moot on it and don't make a reference, what's implied? That they do have to be a resident? It's our discretion as the council that they be a resident, and maybe we don't need to go any further, but I just wasn't sure the interpretation of that, since some say that's required, others say they don't, so the ones that are silent on it, is that left to council and mayor's decision on appointments, if they're a resident or not? And if that's the case, I'm fine with it. I just, that was my own question.
I guess, can you point out this, do you recall a specific one that doesn't make mention? I see Attorney Wolf's hand is up, but if you can dig back your notes while she's speaking.
The only three, yeah, go ahead, absolutely. Attorney Wolf?
Yes, I believe that the Illinois municipal code dictates this issue with respect to just some of the general provisions with respect to officers of the municipality. And residency is a requirement to be an officer. So unless there's some provision in the code that says, like, for instance, the business, or the Economic Development Committee, you know, I believe that they have to be a business owner within the city, but not reside within the city of Rolling Meadows. So every other, every other commission or committee member would be required to be a member then, as dictated by the municipal code.
Mr. Mayor, that takes care of my question then. It was just that, it was called out, like in EDC, it was called out not having to be, which makes total sense. Environmental and the capital improvements said they needed to be. So just on the other ones that had no reference to it, like police and fire pension, all the other ones didn't have a reference to it. It seemed that it was silent on it, but it sounds like if it's not noted, the assumption is by the statute is that they would be residents. So I think that's, that's totally fine by me. I don't know that we need to go any further, yeah.
Wonderful. So that answers your questions for that, and I do see there's a couple hands up. Do you have more, or can I call on the others?
You can certainly call on the others. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Attorney Wolf, I see your hand is up. Just curious if it's supposed to be, or you do have more to say. Thank you. Alderman Budmats?
Um, I, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I do think about the electric commission, I think one of the requirements is that it's like part of a regulating body, like UL Underwriters or CSA, which, not to be funny, but I highly doubt there's anybody who's a resident of Rolling Meadows who's also in a, in a regulatory capacity at UL. So in some of the situations, it would be impossible to meet the intent of the committee if, if we, if we only went with residents. So there has to be a little bit of give and take, if, if that's what we're trying to accomplish.
So also for clarification, that is, that is a committee that I believe is dictated by statute. So there may be other committees or commissions that are specifically dictated by statute and identify specific requirements for, you know, member, the members. So unless otherwise dictated by the statute, I would say that the Illinois municipal code would control.
Alderman Budmats, anything further?
Nerfication.
Fun fact, we do have a resident in Rolling Meadows who, who does work for Underwriters Laboratory in that specific arena. He rides his bike from Meadows to work at UL. So we do. But anyway, Manager Crumstock?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just want to reiterate one thing that Alderman Budmats stated, almost the same thought, but we do have other professionals who are on boards and commissions, specifically when you look at the Board of Fire and Police, the pension boards. We do have people from banks, we do have people from outside agencies that are professionals, maybe they're actuarial or something like that in the past. So it's given us the flexibility to look for the most professional individuals to help out and staff and maintain some of that work that is in some of our committees and commissions. So I guess if you're asking staff wise, we like when they're silent, so it gives the flexibility, as was mentioned by Alderman Budmats. But also it allows for some of those outside agency professionals who are not residents to come in and sit on some of those committees and commissions.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. Any further discussion on this item, this line item C? Manager Crumstock, I'm gonna go ahead and put your hand down, and lower the hand, and it doesn't look like we have any further comments or discussion on this item. So the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for a second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Vinesiano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes, as amended.
Diasis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will move forward for second reading. This now brings us to new business, which is a motion to approve payments of bills on warrant for January 26th, 2021. By show of hand, is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Mikail, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call roll?
Vinesiano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diasis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. So this brings us to the next item on the agenda, the consent resolutions. This consists of five items, items G through K. Does any Alderman wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Alderman Budmats?
Item I, please.
Item I, make a note on that. Any others from any other Aldermen? Okay, seeing none, then the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the four resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Thank you for the second. Alderman O'Brien. That'll begin us off here with the first one, G, resolution number two, one, dash, R, dash, zero, three. It's to award a one-year extension contract for janitorial services for city facilities from February 1st, 2021, through January 31st of 2022. Then there's line item H, resolution number two, one, dash, R, dash, zero, four. Accept the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150 Public Employees Division Contract. Moving on to line item J, resolution number two, one, dash, R, dash, zero, six. Approve Weber Drive Roadway Improvement Project Phase One Engineering. And line item K, resolution number two, one, dash, R, dash, zero, seven. Award a Professional Design Engineering Services Contract for the Proposed Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG, for Arbor Drive Phase Two Resurfacing Project. The question is, shall the four resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diasis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Vinesiano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. Now, this brings us back to resolution number two, one, dash, R, dash, zero, five. It's to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Arlington Heights for Weber Drive Phase One Roadway and Pedestrian Improvement Engineering Services. Alderman Budmats, I know you pulled this, but is there a motion for this resolution to be adopted? Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Budmats, for the second. With that, the floor is yours, since you pulled it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it, it might be moot, because we've already approved it under J, but I noticed in looking at I, it appears is that we are approving the whole cost of this, and then looking for our friends in Arlington Heights to reimburse us for their half of the costs. And how can I say this politely, Arlington Heights has not always been the best intergovernmental friend in when it comes to, when it comes to following through on agreements. And so I'd like to make sure that our attorney, whatever they can do to make sure that this, this agreement is separate from each and every other agreement that we've had with Arlington Heights, and that we can, and that we can put some kind of teeth into the agreement that makes sure that Arlington Heights is gonna, is gonna abide by the agreement in, in case they, they utilize this to, as a lever in other agreements that haven't gone the way they expect. Is that something that we can, that their attorney can speak to?
Thank you. I, you know, from a, a contract standpoint, all agreements are separate. So what's required under this agreement is separate and apart from any other agreement or any other issue that's outstanding between the Village of Arlington Heights and the City of Rolling Meadows. With respect to amending the agreement to put teeth in, in the agreement, if you have a, a proposed amendment, but you, you may suggest that. However, I don't know, I wasn't a party to the negotiation of this agreement, and I don't know how that will move forward between the parties that are, you know, between the Village of Arlington Heights and those on their side of it.
Okay, well, I, I guess I'm just looking to, I'm just looking to not get us as a city further down the road with, with Arlington Heights if we can't resolve our prior problems, and then to just to create another one, if you will.
Manager Crumstock, thank you for raising your hand. Go ahead and take the floor. I was just gonna ask you a couple of questions, but proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Budmats, this obviously, when we've had the standard IGAs, and this is what it is, they do pay on a timely manner. We've not had a issue with, especially with grant money, specifically because if they were ever to default or something else, then they would potentially lose other grants that are out there, and that's why these standard IGAs, they've always paid on time. We are taking the lead on this one. We can always look at potentially down the line if we have another issue or item that we're going to be teaming up with them to try to get a grant or something. Maybe we have them as the lead, and then we're reimbursing them instead of us always putting out the money. But staff feels comfortable with this IGA, with the separation, how we've dealt with it, and their past practice of when we do invoice, that they do pay in a timely manner.
Okay, then based on your staff recommendation and, and those comments, I'll be happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Is, that's good information to have. Any other comments or questions? Manager Crumstock, just gonna lower your hand. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, seeing no further discussion. The question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diasis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Vinesiano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Oh, scroll down on this page. Moving on to other business and reports. I do not have any appointments for this meeting, but I have some coming up now that the committees and commissions discussions have finished. I also don't have any proclamations this week. Does the city clerk have anything to report?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Then that'll bring us on to the staff reports, and just a reminder, there are no discussions during the staff reports. But the first item we have is the community items of interest, and for that, I will defer to Manager Crumstock when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, before you, I don't have to raise my hand, and that's what takes a little time, walking from the computer to the telephone in between us. But you have three that are in front of you, but I have two additionals to add. The first one that we do want to, again, reiterate and thank everyone who's donated and helped out those residents recently displaced by the Coach Lake Condom Fire and happened during the early morning hours of December 29th. As I had a discussion with an Alderman, we will bring you back something in probably that March, April, just talk about. Just talk about what happened and some of the other items that staff dealt with and how we deal with pretty much a larger event. But each event is, has its own emergency management plus how we deal with things. Obviously, the second one that we do want to reiterate, and still until February 12th, the City Swank and Elden Recycling are conducting a light, holiday light recycling program again. Collection Box is located here at City Hall. It does have some snow in it, but that's particular to the weather that just came up. But items that are accepted include mini lights, Italian lights, C7 lights, C9 lights. And again, we cannot take garland or live greens wreath or anything that's really non-recyclable. And again, this program runs through February 12th, so you have a little more time. If you're on dig after all the snow that we've had, you might find some lights that you need to recycle. Then we do want to mention, as mentioned at the January 12th City Council meeting, at this time due to COVID-19 continuing in the area, the February and March city events, namely the Taste of the Town that was scheduled for February 27th and the St. Patrick's Day Dinner that was scheduled for March 13th are being canceled. The new item that I do want to mention is that the next scheduled blood drive will be on Thursday, February 25th here at City Hall from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Another one that I do want to remind in some more towards the council members, please remember to return your harassment forms that are mandated and obviously that we need back here on documentation for overall items here for the state if we are honored. But those, those are the January 26th, 2021 items, and I hope everybody did okay shoveling, which I'll be doing in a little bit. So thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. Yep, we were talking about shoveling before the meeting started and those with snow blowers. Moving on then for the second item, fiscal year 2020 November financials. For this, let's go ahead and speak with Finance Director Gallagher when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Good evening. And before you, in the packet is the fiscal year 2020 financial report for results of operations as of November 30th, 2020, which represents pretty much all of the year, but 92% of the year. While it is intended to be a report that shows results of operations, as a reminder, it is not a financial estimate. There's a lot of information in the report. The memo has a lot of detailed information. I'm just going to high level, give you a high level overview. There's a lot of charts and graphs. And as always, we provide this information to you to do a little bit of your own reading, but a lot of it does help you summarize the results of operations. On page two of the report, starting with the general fund, what I wanted to show you is how it kind of flows from the original adopted budget to where we're, we're standing as of November 30th. Our original adopted budget for the general fund, which is our largest operating fund for the city, showed a deficit position of about 1.3 million for fiscal year 2020, which means that our expenditures were larger than our revenues. When we started the year, we didn't have any issues at, at that time because COVID didn't really come to fruition until about March. But we did plan a deficit position for 2020. As we got into the year, we, we took some early mitigation, City Council, and we were able to bring in funds, and it's detailed within the memo, from other funds for the health, from the Health Insurance Fund and Liability Insurance Fund to help with some of the, the early estimates for revenue losses. What that did was provide budget amendments of about 1.8 million dollars, mostly with those transfers for revenues. We had a couple of expenditure budget amendments. And that brings us to our amended adopted budget for the year. With our amended adopted budget, it means that that shows you where we sat per amended adopted budget, which was a surplus position, about 400,000. For November 30th, for the general fund, we're showing a little bit better than our adopted budget, our amended budget of about 800,000 with revenues exceeding expenditures. So we're a little bit better than we were initially. But it's important to remember that we still have revenues coming in, such as our major revenues, such as sales tax, telecommunications tax, local use tax, income tax, that we have to earn in the months of January, February, and March, and we record back to 2020. So we still have some revenues that are major revenues that might affect the revenue outlook. However, right now, as of November 30th, we're about right on target for our revenues. And we're trending just a little bit below on the expenditures. And that's pretty much where we'll sit, about 2% lower on expenditures. Again, we have our city auditors that'll be coming in soon. There's a lot of work that's done for the 2020 year. But at this point, these are very fine tuned estimates that are also trending right in line with our estimates as shown in our 2021 adopted budget. And it's also in this memo on page nine. So you can see where we are sitting with all the funds. And our estimates right now are trending very close to what we initially put in our 2021 adopted budget for end, year end 2020. What I wanted to also highlight is recall that legal marijuana taxes began in July 2020. That was not a budgeted item for 2020. Due to an Illinois Department of Revenue rule for, in 2021, municipalities may not identify cannabis taxes. And so they cannot detail those out in line items. What we had to do is make sure that they are combined per their direction at Department of Revenue. Combine those legal cannabis taxes within sales taxes. The city has now updated all of the information so that it does comply with this regulation and merged cannabis taxes line items within sales taxes. But right now, what we can tell you is that our current estimates are trending with original estimates. I also wanted to highlight that what we're seeing in the economy too. And we're seeing real estate transfers coming in, and that means that real estate is moving. We're also seeing that we do have lower receipts coming in for food and beverage taxes in the general fund. However, we're seeing increases slightly in some other areas, such as some areas in sales taxes. A local use tax also, I've mentioned this before, has slightly, more than slightly increased beyond the target for the year, and that's due to online sales. The revenue outlook again, right on target with where we sit for the year. Beginning on page three, just to mention again, our budget amendments. We'll highlight those every single time in our memo. It's very important because it also flows to our audit when we present that to you, when it's finally done in the year. But again, highlighting the budget amendments are on page three of the memo. We have our liability insurance transfer, health insurance transfers are about 1.5 coming in for the general fund. We had the Census Grant for 25,000 and the CARES Act Grant of 316,000. So those were the budget amendments approved by the city council. Our expenditure budget amendments are also listed. We have a business assistance program for 2020. The Temporary Family Assistance Program of 5,000, each of those are 5,000. And the grant to the Salvation Army of 25,000. Just good to highlight those again, to show you those budget amendments approved by city council. I did want to touch on the COVID relief programs. Again, I mentioned the CARES Act Program of 316,000. As a reminder, we applied for about 900,000 from CARES Act, which is a Cook County funds distributed from the federal government. And we received 316,000. Cook County, just as a footnote to that, did award an additional 12,000. Ironically, Cook County reached out to us today and let us know the check is coming pretty soon. So that will be booked. It's literally in the mail. So that is good news. We will keep on top of that in case there are additional funds out there for the CARES Act. We have submitted to the FEMA, to FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Association for funds as well. So those are the types of things that we'll continue to work on. There've been new increases in requirements and things like that, and we'll continue to report back to you on that. Again, just to summarize for the general fund, we're, we're on target with our initial estimates of about $10 million of fund balance for the year. And that represents about three months of reserves on hand, right in the midpoint, about 24% to 27% based on current estimates, estimates on our fund balance parameters. Really, this really highlights most of the general fund, just because it's the largest operating fund. I'll just touch on slightly within the memo itself as well. Real quickly, utilities fund and the refuse fund, slightly lower for revenues on the utilities fund. And I did want to mention too that expenditures are lower, but that was obviously a planned move by the city as we're, we were dealing with COVID, just to ensure that, that revenues, to balance out any revenue losses, which right now, we're just slightly down at 7%. Refuge Fund is really on target, nothing really to report there. We did add some economic data. Again, this has been in the report before, but just keeping you apprised of the current unemployment rate as of November. And then the cash and investment summary is also in this report. As of November 30th, the city's cash position is 24 million across all funds. Again, there's a lot of detail within the memo, within the, the body of the financials. And I'll leave it there for tonight. And thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the report, Finance Director Gallagher. Appreciate the highlights and the information that you shared with us. For this next one, I'll defer to Director Horn on the leaf program discussion. Director Horn?
Thank you, Mayor. I couldn't get my microphone. Not a lot to report. The memo is pretty clear. We will be providing information regarding the requested information on the leaf, potential for a leaf program in March. That's it. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Then we'll go back to Manager Crumstock, and we'll talk about the December 2020 new businesses that, that came in the month of December.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, there is only one that we have for new business. We want to thank all the new businesses that moved in during 2020 during a pandemic and continue thriving. We also want to thank the council for, that they did to make sure that six fees were approved and additional work continues. And that will finish it for 2020. But again, we're already seeing some new ones in 2021. So with that, that is the December new business list of one.
Thanks for bringing us up to speed on that one. This will now bring us to matters not on the agenda. Are there any matters not on the agenda? Just waiting to see if there's any hands. Alderman Bessisi?
Yes, I just wanted to put a last, how do I say this? Communication out there regarding the chipper program survey. I believe we're going to stop tallying on the first, if that's correct, Mr. Horn. Yes, I see him nodding his head. And we'll be discussing results at our next COW meetings. So if you do want to participate in that and you haven't, please do so. And that's pretty much it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Bessisi. Any other matters not on the agenda? All right. Well, then you will notice on this agenda that there is a request to go into closed session, and it will require, it does require a motion and a roll call vote. So with that, do I have by show of hand a motion to go into closed session? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Diastis for the second. This is for personnel, of course. Is there any discussion about going into closed session for personnel? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll then?
Soneka?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. So with this, the audience impressed, you are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. So with that, I wish you all a wonderful evening. Enjoy the snow. Council will see you on the other line for closed session shortly.